Good morning, welcome to our April regular meeting of Chesterfield County Council. It's 9:00 AM, so I'll call this meeting to order. Before we have our prayer, everybody please keep Councilman Gerald Miller in your prayers, if you would. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Todd Smallwood to have our opening prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we love you, we praise you, we thank you for this opportunity to come together this morning in your presence and represent the people of Chesterfield County, Lord. And let us not forget that that is the reason we are here. We ask that you guide our every thought, our every word, and our every decision today, Lord, and that you direct our actions and every decision we make, Lord. And may they honor and glorify you. And we ask that you give each and every person in this room their travel and graces as they leave here and depart for the rest of their day at the adjournment of this meeting, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we move down to item three, adoption of the agenda.
Yes, sir. It's my understanding there is a need to amend the agenda, Mr. Chairman. We would add under fourteen, as fourteen C, a resolution authorizing submission of a community development block grant application. It's also related to the Hillion Edwards Road Water Project, which is item fourteen B, letter of support. Also, there would, within the motion to amend the agenda, there would need to be a finding of exigent circumstances, such being that the grant deadline is going to be here before the next regular council meeting. So that would need to be approved at this meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving down to item four, this time, we'd like to recognize some employees for their years of service, Ms. McDonald.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And this is our recognition business service team. Our first is Avery Asher, five years at the line here. Sheri Donnie, five years, says about. Grayson Williamson, five years, line here. Bronson Isley, ten years, Public Works. Tracy Skencer, fifteen years, Treasury Office. And our own Kim Willis, five years in HR. We also have our employee lunching today at Sheriff's Department from eleven to two for the employees.
Thank you. And thank you all for your service to our county. At this time, we move down to item five, the approval of minutes from our March the sixth meeting. If there are no corrections or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six, signing of the bonds, I think they're being passed now. So we'll move down to item seven A, appointments. Today, we're glad to have with us Mr. Rob Wolf, manager of Towne and Charro. You would come forward, please, sir.
Good morning, and thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak here this morning. We have an opportunity in the Towne and Charro. We're looking to build a new fire station. And we are seeking assistance from Congressman Russell Frye's office in obtaining an appropriation to build that fire station. We expect it to be about a four and a half million dollar project. And of course, our fire station serves not only the Towne and Charro, but a five mile radius from the fire station, which includes portions of Chesterfield County. And so this morning, I'm here to ask for a letter of support for that appropriation from Congressman Frye's office. Our current fire station was built about nineteen eighty. It's kind of reached the end of its service life. One of the more unique features of it is that the bay doors are from the nineteen eighties and trucks today have gotten much larger. And so we actually have to special order our trucks so that they can fit inside of our existing fire station. In addition, the weight of trucks today typically can't, or is much larger than they were forty years ago. And so the bay area is not strong enough, I guess I'll say, to support the weight of the fire trucks. And then researching around the state at this time, everything indicates that it is cheaper to build a new one than it is to renovate and expand the existing one. So we would really appreciate it if you guys would offer a letter of support so that we can continue to serve not only our own residents, but the residents, industries, and businesses in Chesterfield County as well.
Thank you very much for coming. Do I have a motion to provide this letter of support?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
One quick question, if I may, and it may upset the whole apple cart, but where the fire station's located now, it's not far from the county line. Are they looking at properties closer back this way to incorporate more people into that lower ISO?
So we're searching, there's two parts of land we're looking at, and we're searching for as close as we can to the current fire station so that we're not upsetting the current, excuse me, the current fire district radius. Our fire chief believes that it won't impact more than one or two pieces of property.
Okay, thank you.
So have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Rob. At this time, we'd like to welcome Stacy Short, Ms. Ethel Moore from PD Coalition.
Good morning, council members. First, thank you this morning for allowing us to come before you this morning to speak. I want to thank you for your continued support for PD Coalition and the work that we do. I have with me my victim advocate, Ms. Ethel Moore, and we come this morning to talk about April, which is Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Prevention Month. We come to share some statistics for you for Chesterfield County, for South Carolina as a whole, and also share for some events that we will be doing throughout the month of April. As you know, sexual assault and child abuse is some alarming, important issues that we are continuing to combat on a daily basis. For South Carolina in the January, we have seen over thirty-five hundred cases of sexual assault in the year of twenty twenty-three, and that is very alarming. When we look at those numbers, half of them has been adults, and over half of them have been children under the ages of eighteen. In our Durant Center right in Hartsfield, we have seen a hundred and fifty-nine children for child sexual abuse have been seen in the year of twenty twenty-three, and that is alarming. In our PD Coalition sites across our seven satellite centers, we have seen a total of sixty-eight sexual assault victims who have came through our doors. Now, that's just the ones who have got the courage to come through our doors. So we have known that it has been a whole lot more. So this has been alarming issue that we continue to combat on a daily issue. So we are trying to work on this issue as a daily thing. And so some of the things that we're doing to work on this is we're having our kickoff event, which will be this coming Friday. It's called "A Male Perspective on Sexual Assault." And what it is, is we're trying to get males to come to the table, we're getting male community leaders, males from the community to come to sit to the table so that we can start talking about this issue and get a male perspective about what can we do as a community as a whole. We invite you guys, some of the council members, to come. It's going to be from twelve-thirty to one-thirty at our satellite center in Chesterfield, and we want to talk about, because as a community, we are better together to come together to talk about those issues, to see what we can do. And we know that sexual assault affects primarily females, but we never think about that it also affects males as well. We miss that gap of the problem as well. And so we want to sit to the table and talk about from a male perspective, because the male voice is so important, and you have a big, a big voice in that helping to solve that issue. So that's our kickoff event. I'm going to let Ms. Moore talk about the other events that we're going to be doing throughout the month, but we would like for you to come and share in that with us. We have some packets, and we will leave those over there on the side, as well as some door hangers for you guys.
Good morning.
As Ms. Short said, we do have, our male's perspective is our kickoff, and she took the form with me, with her. So we have Adult Bingo that we're going to do at the recreation center. We're also going to do a paint night, and we use paint night as art therapy. Between the two of us, we probably have forty years of human services and mental health, and we found that art is a way to, for our victims to really just continue to process whatever sexual assault, whatever domestic violence, anything that they're dealing with, trauma in general. We will be hosting Elder Abuse with Chesco Services to just highlight the elder abuse and what to look for, that's to the staff. We're also going to Spring Hill, which is in Pageland, I believe, to do the same thing. We're, as I said, we're doing Adult Bingo down at the recreation center. We try to do things with our seniors, just to, and we try to make it fun. It's a learning opportunity, because the bingo is just not the, you know, the call not the numbers. What we're going to do is actually, we'll give the information, and then, we'll give the information, and they are allowed to win prizes as well. Just some of the other things that we're doing is-
Denim Day.
Denim Day, which everyone can participate in, and I believe that's on the twenty-fourth-
It's the twenty-fourth.
But, so if you all would like to participate in Denim Day, please let us know. We'll come and take a picture, and we'll put it on our Facebook. We try to provide an opportunity for everyone in the community to participate. We also have a candlelight vigil that's coming up on-
April eleventh. On the eleventh. It'll be at the Centennial Park in Charro. It will be with Guardian Met Lytton, so is to stand for Sexual Assault as well as Child Abuse Prevention, and we're doing that with Guardian Met Lytton. It'll be at Centennial Park at six PM down. And Faith Christian Academy Youth will be performing there, and so we're excited about that. This'll be our first time doing it in Charro. We normally do it on the courthouse lawn in Chesterfield, so this'll be our first time doing it in Charro. So please, if you can, come down and join us in some of those activities. Denim Day is to stand in solidarity for sexual assault, and is to wear any type of denim, whether it's blue jeans or any type of denim on that day. So we're just trying to ask anyone throughout the county to wear denim, take pictures, so that we can put it on our Facebook page to say that we're standing in solidarity against sexual assault. I did want to just point out some statistics for child abuse and to say that we rank number twenty-one as far as child maltreatment in the counties, we are, in the forty-six counties, we rank number twenty-one in child maltreatment for Chesterfield County. So that tells the severity of where we are with our children. If we don't change the dynamics to cultivate and train and teach our children and help, that's our next generation, and so we got to put the work in. And so, because if not, then they'll grow up to be the perpetrators that will inflict the pain on others, and so there's still work to do, and so that is why we continue to do the work. And so how you guys can help is to continue to bring awareness and continue to help educate, teach one, see something, say something, help teach someone else. And so thank you for the opportunity to share, continue to support the work that we continue to do. Is there any questions for us?
One note I'd like to add before we leave. To bring awareness to child abuse, we do try to address the issue. So we offer training, we're doing a parent training at the EOC head start in Charro, and we do a virtual training as well for the parents who can't attend. So, and that's just to bring awareness to the parents to see what abuse looks like, because it's not always physical. We do talk about neglect, and we talk about emotional abuse as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you and your staff for trying to protect some of our most vulnerable citizens. We do thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve this proclamation declaring April the Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Prevention. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We move down to item eight, public comments. Before we ask for public comments, while we welcome all comments, public comment should be limited to four minutes per speaker, twenty minutes per subject. Is anyone wishing to address counsel? Seeing none, we'll move down to item nine A, public hearing of the ordinance granting easement to Dominion Energy. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Have a motion and a second, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now opened. Does anyone wish to address counsel on this ordinance? No one wished to address counsel, I'll assume the same two will make the motion in a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move down to item ten A, ordinance granting easement to Dominion Energy. This is the third reading. Is there a motion for this third reading?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Burns.
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll move down to item ten B, this is the ordinance granting easement to CCNW Development Group to place the sanitary sewer to the Lynch's River Industrial Park. This is a second reading. Is there a motion for the second reading?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We move down to item ten C, Walmart, Fianlu of Ordinants, first reading for the twenty-four to twenty-five distribution. Is there a motion to approve this first reading?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Rivers, second by Mr. Conklin, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move down to item D, twenty-four to twenty-five, Casserole Fire Department Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only. Mr. Conklin and Ms. Burns, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item E, twenty-four to twenty-five, Harris Creek Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only. Is there a motion? Mr. Rivers.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Anderson, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four to twenty-five, Alligator Rule Fire Department Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only. Is there a motion to approve this first reading? Mr. Conklin, Mr. Curtis, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item G, twenty-four to twenty-five, General Fund Budget Ordinance, first reading by title only. Is there a motion to approve this first reading?
So moved.
Ms. Burns and Mr. Smallwood, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item ten H, Emergency Ordinance Declaring the Temporary Moratorium on the Establishment of Mobile Homes and Subdivisions.
So moved.
Have a motion, second, is any discussion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to just bring everybody up to date. Planning and zoning committee met on March twenty-seventh, and we're continuing to review our current ordinances under the direction of Mr. Oatton and Mr. Ruffner, and we're getting pretty close to bringing back a recommendation to council. It's been a lot of work on their part, and I appreciate all the time that they've spent on that, but we're close, maybe by next month, we'll have something for council.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item ten I, Fair Housing Resolution. This is a resolution declaring April as Fair Housing Month.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll move down to item ten J, so proclamation for the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Is there anyone here representing them today?
My daughter represents, but she's not here.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll move down to item eleven, I don't think there's any standing committee reports. Item twelve, noise ordinance, Ms. Anderson, would you like to address this?
Yes, sir. Several constituents have reached out to me regarding noise and complaints and ongoing noise issues. So I know our sheriff's office has been called out several times, and from my understanding, our current ordinance has the codes office as the enforcing body, which not only gives them extra work, but is probably not the safest route for us to take. So I was just wanting to bring that to everybody's attention, because that was just what I discovered throughout, and maybe if we could send that to a committee and see if we need to make any changes regarding that.
Okay. Well, if anybody's got any discussion on there, if not, we'll refer that back to the planning and zoning committee.
Yes, sir.
Who'd accept that?
Quick comment. Yes, sir. Ms. Anderson, I don't know how you get all these great assignments about this. It'll be another toughie, and I feel like Mr. Eubanks can help you. We had issues up on the western end years ago, and with this being a county ordinance, would it have to be enforced by our codes department or the sheriff's office?
I think that's the question.
That's the question, as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be a county ordinance and-
Yes, sir.
Go through codes.
Well, I think, you know, that's one thing, we just want to check into what our options are and what's best for codes, what's best for the county and our citizens.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly.
Okay. Move down to item thirteen, bid award for Savannah Drive and Boyd Lane.
Ms. Stanley?
Yes, sir. Invitation for bids was sent out to pave Savannah Drive and Boyd Lane. Three bids were received on March the fifth, and based on the enclosed information you have in your packet, it's recommended that council approve the acceptance of the bid from Evans Pavement for four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, four forty-sixty-seven.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this bid as staff recommended?
Is, is this, I got a question. This is a CTC project.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, council is not in the road paving business, this is through the CTC.
No, we don't do anything.
Yeah, so that way, if anybody, if anybody sees it, reads it, or hears it, this is not up to us.
I'm just thankful they getting them out of the mud.
Good point.
They have a motion to accept this bid.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item B, Mr. Eubanks, Litter Pickup Day?
Yeah, just to let everybody know that we have picked May the tenth as the countywide litter pickup day. That's on a Friday, and I asked Ms. Pig to, if she could come today, but she's out of town, you know, as y'all are aware, she's on the Palmetto Pride Board. She said to let y'all know that, you know, she'd be willing, or she's willing to do all the advertising and get all the supplies and all from Palmetto Pride that will be needed. There's a lot of stuff to do, like last time we did it was back in two thousand and nineteen, and then COVID hit. We were trying to get this to be an every-year thing. I asked Mr. Arant to come this morning to make sure, because his office is the one that is actually handling everything. So the way we'd like to do it is, if you go to our website, you can see, he'll have it, where it'll be labeled, I'm assuming Chesterfield County Annual Litter Pickup. If you'll click on that, it'll give you some options to go through, and you can go in there and pick. He'll have a map on our website that will then indicate your name and the road that you want to pick up for that time, kind of like we did the last time. And we hope to just close this map up with everybody's name, showing them which roads that they'd like to pick up that time. So if you would go, he's got a number, he'll have a number there to dial, it's actually eight-four-three-six-two-three-thirty-three-six-two, or you can go on the CCEMD at Chesterfield County SC dot com, and it'll walk you through each step you need to take. If you have any questions, just get up with Mr. Arant, and he'll be glad to help you in any way. We'd like to get this thing kicked off and get this whole county, every road adopted to be picked up on May the tenth, so.
They will provide the bags?
They will provide the bags and allow you to go to the convenience centers. We'll have those at that time where to be free to dump. They'll be looking for the certain bags that will be handed out to the public to do, so that we no charge or anything like that. We're just trying to get the entire county picked up, so, Chad, did I miss anything?
Are you going to schedule like you did last time, like Public Works would pick up the side of the road?
If you, if it's where you cannot take it to the convenience center, let us know. We will get Public Works to swing by, pick up the trash on the side of the road, and haul it off for you. and haul it off for you, so. Now, the other thing we ran into last year, and we want to make sure. If you can't participate on May the 10th, that Friday, but you're willing to do another day that week, let us know, and we'll make arrangements for that also. So we want, we would like everybody to participate, so. So any questions on any of that? Because I'm, there's a lot of things to connect there.
I think we have a lot more participation now that you've agreed to sponsor a picnic after this thing. We appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Curtis.
You think, you think we could work with municipalities or something to try to set up locations for the bags and the sticks to help?
I know, I know, actually, I had one municipality, Jefferson, actually called wanting to participate. And I told them, as soon as we get this kicked off, I'd let all the municipalities know so that they, too, if they want to be involved, we can, they can do so.
Well, I think it was very successful last time. And everyone, please tell your friends, get a group, clean up. Have a good time afterwards. Thanks, Chad.
So we will have another council meeting before then. So if anybody's got any ideas on other things that we can implement, please feel free to share with us. But we'd like this thing to be great for our county.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. We'll move down to item 13C. Department of Commerce Grant. Ms. Lear?
Y'all, this is good news. You've got a map in your packet. I did not know where we were going to get the money to complete the, to get additional water services at Lynch's River Industrial Park. But our office applied for a half a million dollar grant from the Department of Commerce. And we were, found out two weeks ago that we were awarded that. We have to put $50,000 of our money with it. And on the map you're looking at, that is the blue portion that that $550,000 will cover. The green portion has already been handled. We're doing a final walkthrough with that on Thursday, but we've got water to the company that's in the park, so we're happy about that. I don't know where the money's going to come for the last section of water, but I'm glad we've got it for the, for the middle section now. Are there any questions?
Oh, but I, that's good news.
Good work, yeah.
I was excited. Could, would you?
Y'all girls need to go to work on a percentage where you've been dragging it in here. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I was, I was, had my fingers crossed on that one. Do we need to do a motion to accept the funds from Commerce?
Okay, is there a motion to accept this grant?
Yes, yes, yes.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you for the good news.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to item 14. Unfinished business. This is a memorandum of agreement with the Alpha Behavioral Center.
Yes, sir.
Give us a little explanation there, please, sir.
As, as I'm sure councilor calls. Director of the Alpha Center was before council several months ago to agree to serve as the entity that would procure funds from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund, which is a, quite a complex process. Council agreed to do that. This memorandum is simply a formal acknowledgement of that agreement. And all we would need today is a motion authorizing U.S. Chair to sign that agreement.
Is there a motion to approve this MOA? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question for Mr. Ruffin. Would this, these funds come out of the settlement that we received several years ago?
We actually got it last year.
Got it last year.
We got our first one.
It's going to be reoccurring funds for, I don't know how many years.
Right, it's for 18 years, but all the funds are put into one pool. And you have to apply to receive the funds. They're not just automatically sent to you. So, and again, that's a, there are very strict requirements on what that can be used for.
Right.
And Alpha is well-equipped to, to submit the required documentation and application for those grants.
Definitely got an opioid problem in this county.
Sure, we do.
Thanks, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move down to item 14B. It's a letter of support for the Heian Edward Road Water Project. It says something's been going on for the last year or so, and hopefully, there's going to be some resolution on this. And PD COG is requesting a letter of support for this project.
You'd probably like to make that motion yourself, wouldn't you? I'd make the motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Curtis. Say goodbye. Mr. Smallwood? Any discussion?
Yeah, how does this relate to the resolution that we got also at the last minute?
This has to be separate, doesn't it?
Right, and, and Ms., our grants coordinator's here to answer questions.
The resolution I seen last minute was for the application. It goes along with the application. And the letters of support would just, they want those to show your support in getting these residents on rural water because they currently do not have that. They're all operating off of wells.
Is this the appropriate time for me to ask a question about the finances of this resolution?
I can, that's the next item. Yeah, you want me to answer? Okay.
What I, what my question was, it said the project costs are estimated at 1.425 million. But then on section two, it says that Chesterfield County shall provide a local match of not less than 10% of the total CDBG cost plus any overages needed to complete the project. So that's 142,000 some odd dollars of matching money. Where's that money going to come from?
I have two letters from Rural Water. One was from Dustin Cato. He's the previous general manager. And currently, I updated it from Julie, who is the current general manager. They will provide, it states that they will provide the 10% match plus any overages and the operation and maintenance of these lines. So the county will not have any responsibility or have to pay anything for this.
Thank you, Courtney. Have a motion first. Anything else? First of all, I need a motion for a letter of support. Mr. Curtis?
A second.
Ms. Burns? Any further discussion?
I'd like to, to, you know, reiterate the fact that the county is not in the water business. So I'm glad that that's, you know, was brought up, that we're not furnishing the water. We don't do that, and so.
And it's no, no cost, no, no cost to the taxpayers at all, and I'm very thankful for that. Hopefully, we can work on more projects like that to get water throughout the county and other places that are in need.
Yeah, definitely support this because they have been trying to get that water for a long time. But again, we're not in the water business.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So now, is there a motion to accept the resolution or? Is there a motion for the resolution? Mr. Conklin? Ms. Burns? Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 15, there's no new business. Board appointments, none. Administrator, report. Mr. Eubanks?
As Mrs. Wilk said, remind everybody of the employee luncheon. But also, to give you an update. I don't know if y'all are aware of the issues we're having at the courthouse. Got a call yesterday. They lost power at the courthouse, and come to find out, we was thinking it was on the transformer, but not. It was our main line going into the courthouse that actually melted. So we were having to jump through some hoops there. But hopefully, if everything goes well today, we'll have power back on that. So I want to apologize for any inconvenience and all that anybody's having to deal with over at the courthouse, so.
Anything else?
That'd be all.
Move down to item 18. Council members, comments? Anybody got anything?
I do.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let everybody know. I attended the Charles Board of Architectural Review last night, and they were meeting about various things. But one of them was the recreational complex expansion, which is, you know, our grant, the $500,000 grant that the county received that we've transferred over to the town to implement for us. And they are 90% complete with the planning phase. And Rob helped me. But I think breaking ground in June is, is the hope, the goal, and then to be completed by the end of the year. I just wanted to give you an update that that's moving forward.
You want, did you want to say anything about the little NESA meeting that you?
Yeah, I had that written down that I wasn't sure. And you can help me with that, too. But Mr. Butler and I attended. NESA has begun having roundtable opportunities for county administration or county leaders to come to. And we just discussed issues that all the counties are having collectively and how they're solving problem, how are each solving problems. And we're finding that it is really regional. As we've discovered, you know, our, our issues are the same across the board. We're going to be hosting the one, the next one in May in Charal. But it really was interesting to hear what other counties are doing with their monies and with their issues. And you can maybe add what, what you got out of it.
Well, it seems like most everybody has a common set of problems.
Mm-hmm. Housing.
Got a little different one here or there. But a lot of it is, you know, same problems and the issues that we face, other counties face the same thing.
Housing and workforce were huge. You know, it's, it was interesting to hear, you know, their, their goals and kind of what they're trying to bring to their counties and how that could affect other counties, our county. So it's good for us to meet together.
Well, and I, I think these, these kind of roundtable or round robin to a certain degree which each county is hosting. And I think it is going, if people attend them, it opened my eyes to a lot of things. And I think would anyone else that has the opportunity to attend.
Well, and I mean, for example, we all know that the detention center is, you know, something that we really have a serious situation with. And there was someone there who had, I don't know if he said 25 years' worth of law enforcement, detention center experience. And so he said, well, maybe you could contact so-and-so, you know, and find out about this or that. And so just having different people at the table with different experiences is good because we may be able to get some help or get some things figured out, you know, using resources like, like that.
That was the gentleman from Williamsburg County.
Yeah, he was great, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I do. So I was approached during a meeting one day last week and was asked about the minutes being posted online. They were requesting if that's a possibility for us to look into posting the minutes online. They, some people said they liked to watch the video, and some people say they like to be able to sit back and read the minutes. Yes, ma'am.
They're already online.
Okay, well. They're on the website? Okay, all right. Well, I'll, I'll let them know because I didn't know that myself. And it's nice to see this group of people here, too. Also, seems like the crowd keeps getting bigger and bigger and people getting more involved, and I appreciate that, too.
Thank you. There is a need to go into executive session. Mr. Ruffin, would you please explain?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That would be pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70, subsection A5, to discuss matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, and provision of services encouraging the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in areas served by the county. And that's specifically regarding the following, and that is the potential sale of property in the Lynch's River Industrial Park. And then the second item is pursuant to subsection A2. That is to discussion contractual arrangements, the receipt of legal advice that would be subject to attorney-client privilege. And that is regarding potential locations for the detention center. And as noted on the agenda, council may take action on one or both of those items after exiting executive session.
We need a motion to enter into executive session. Motion by Mr. Conklin. Second by Ms. Smallwood. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now in executive session, but. Now in executive session, but.
We're back in regular session while we in executive session, no motions were made and no votes were taken. So now we need a motion to authorize, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, be to authorize the administrator and economic development director to continue negotiations with the potential purchaser of the property in Lynch's River Industrial Park.
Okay, we have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion taken. Thank everyone for all the discussion on that. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we are now adjourned.